I warned you. Call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order if you'll please stand for invocation and pledge.
Good evening, thanks for being here. Join me as we pray. Our dear gracious Sunday Father, we thank you for this evening, we thank you for the opportunity to come here and do the business of a city. Thank you for those that are here tonight, and we thank you for our city administration and the work that they've done to make this meeting happen. Go with us now, and as we make decisions, that you give us wisdom and knowledge in doing so. Move those who aren't with us tonight, watch them care for them, and we ask all these things in your name.
Amen.
Join me in the pleasurable nature.
(inaudible) of United States of America. One nation under God, indivisible, benevolent and justous.
Ms. Drake, roll please.
Carrie Hyde, Ward one.
Yes.
Jay Spat, Ward two. Carrie Ross, Ward three.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward four.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward five. Pat Bren, Ward six. Sorry, I was waiting for our council member Fox to say here.
Don't do that, because you're going to have a long wait, because he's not here. He did let us know well in advance, he had a family event that he was tending to, so we wish him well on that. Let's go ahead and get started with the first order of business, which is the swearing-in of our deputy clerk. So, oh no, I'm sorry. Wow, we got to approve our council meeting minutes, I apologize for that. And council, you've had these since June 1st, excuse me, these are the minutes from our June 1st meeting, you got them earlier in the week and had a chance to review them, now's the time to make any edits, and if there are none, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously, thank you. Now Ms. Drake, I'll turn it over to you for the swearing-in of our deputy clerk.
Yes, Mayor, Council. Actually Peters has been hired as the new deputy city clerk, and upon approval by the board, Mr. Peters will be thrown in, Ms. Peters.
Okay. Chair, will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, let's get to swearing.
All right. So if you will raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Georgia, and that you will in all respects observe the provisions of the charter and ordinances of the City of Cartersville, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of deputy city clerks and help you guide. If I will. You'll just sign right there for me, please. Thank you, and welcome.
Our next appointment is to the library board, Mr. Porter.
Yes, Mayor. Sidney Lugeans is willing to step in to replace Karen Barnhart, as she, her new term would start soon and expire June 30th, 2026, if council approves her.
Thank you, I'll just comment, Karen was one of the people that I've appointed, and is a friend, and has done a great job on that board, so thank you for her time served there. And chair, will entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Lugeans.
I make a motion to approve the appointment.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Alcohol control board appointment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Rick Naps, who's our current chairman, his term expired June 3rd, he's willing to continue to serve if reappointed, and Mayor, he is your appointment.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Mr. Menino, since you're up. We had a couple of first readings tonight, the first one is ZMA 23-01.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor and Council. Every year we take the previous year's zonings and annexations and update the map, so we keep a current map for the city. With that, the changes from last year have been presented to the Planning Commission, and Planning Commission did recommend amendment to the zoning map to include the previous year's cases.
Thank you. And we need a public hearing for that, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any questions for Randy at this point? Seeing none, I will turn it over, open up a public hearing relative to the zoning map amendment. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak about that, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, we'll take this up for final consideration on July 2nd.
Sixth.
Excuse me, sixth. Yeah, continue on with T 2303, please.
This is actual text amendment to the zoning ordinance, it's 26 amendments to the zoning ordinance in order to comply with the state legislature's adoption, or, yeah, adoption or changes to the zoning procedures law. With that, as Keith had noted in the work session, it impacts three major areas, one being administrative variance procedures, one being the public notification procedures, and the third area would be updates to the judicial appeal process. Staff's biggest concern was the change to the administrative variance process, but the way that it's written, I mean, it's, it's pretty cut and dry that it has to occur, it will definitely lengthen the process for applicants going through that process for us. But with that, you know, Keith drafted the changes to comply with the legislation, with that we presented it to the Planning Commission, Planning Commission did recommend we move forward with the changes.
So all these changes are just to get us with updated state laws?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. We'll open up a public hearing relative to T 2303. Anybody wishing to speak for or against me, do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for T 2303, and we will take this up for consideration on our July 6th meeting. Mr. Lovell, you got the next item, please.
Yes, Mayor, the next item is another settlement agreement with respect to the opioid litigation. This one is with Publix, and it authorizes our special counsel on that to finalize that document and approve the payout amounts.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Chief Klondinger, you're up.
The police department's current inventory of less lethal tasers, the warranty runs out on those in August of this year, the warranty and liability coverage, and they'll no longer be supported by the manufacturer, which is Axon Enterprise. We applied for and have been awarded a grant from the Governor's Office Public Safety and Community Violence Reduction Grant Program in the amount of $221,760. That money would be used to buy 56 new bombers, holsters, cartridges, tasers, and we would ask for the council's approval and authorization to accept that.
Okay. Any questions, Chief, on this?
I would just like to thank Chief Klondinger, Chief Can for applying for this grant, obviously it's a savings to the taxpayers, since he had this money budgeted for next year, but again, I appreciate you guys taking the time and looking for the grants and applying for them, and obviously getting this awarded to us.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell, you got the next few here, a couple anyway.
Yes, the first is the repeal of ordinance 22-23. This would be, although we had a resolution here for the emergency reading, this will actually be a first reading of the repeal of this ordinance. Basically, we had a billing rate error code in there, so we're asking that the council just repeal that, and we will be readopting that as corrected in the next item.
Okay, thank you. Just for clarification, we vote on this to repeal it, and we'll just have a first reading of the new ordinance?
No, I'd like a first reading on the repeal, since we had it originally set up to be an emergency reading, but it was determined we did not need to do that for the billing cycle.
Okay.
So this should be a first reading to repeal ordinance 22-23, and I'll send you the corrected documents on that, too.
Okay, totally fine. So that's the first reading, so there's no action to be taken by council at this time, and we'll move on to the correction of the ordinance, again, next time, I guess you, this is just the new and corrected.
This is the new and correct one, which will go into effect for the billing cycle after it's adopted.
And just so people, this does not impact anybody's rates or anything, this is all wording that just needed to get cleaned up and clarified.
Yes.
Okay, and again, we'll take this up for the second reading at our July 6th meeting. We have a couple of second readings of ordinances, and the first is the budget ordinance for the fiscal year 2324.
Yes, Mayor, this is, again, the second reading ordinance, it's a request, a total budget of $217,91,535. We've gone through it in the prior budget, as well as the May work session, kind of made some adjustments as we discussed in the work session, which will be kind of covered under the contract performing services, but this is recommended for your approval, it is balanced, and it does allow, again, some increases in overall cost, some of that's due to, obviously, inflation, but we are trying to, we are maintaining a balanced budget, and do recommend this for your approval.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the budget? Did have the budget presentation, last meeting, and no discussion. If there's no discussion, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. And again, just want to point out, you know, this is, go about our business, this budget process started way back in the beginning of the year with department heads at literally every corner of our, of our city, you know, put this together. City council had a budget, had some, a budget update meeting, you went through the whole process, and worked with the finance department and the department heads to get this down into a budget, a balanced status. Again, we've had presentations and overlooked it, so again, there's a lot of work in what we just passed right there, and I want to thank everybody that had a piece in that, so. We'll move along. Amendment to the utilities ordinance for water and sewer rates.
Yes, sir, as part of that budget, I was passed, there was a 2% rate increase being proposed for the water and sewer rates. This is very minimal, still, even with that 2% rate increase, it's going to put us at the second lowest in our region for rates. We are very low and very competitive in our rates, but this is recommended for your approval.
And just as a frame of reference, the increase in the bills will equal, on a standard residential, a dollar and 27 a month?
For a 7,000 gallons consuming, yes, a dollar 27 per month increase.
Thank you, all right. Chair will entertain a motion if there's no discussion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Dan, you've got the next item.
Yes, sir, this is the contract performing services, which is part of the budget, the agencies that are included in this is Cartersville Barto Library, in the amount of $469,500, Cultural Arts Alliance, $41,000, Juvenile Port, $15,000, Barto Health Access for $2,000, Good Neighbor Homeless Shelter for $15,000, A Lee Wilkins Youth Association for $18,000, Barto, Cartersville Joint Development Authority for $250,000, Downtown Development Authority for $220,000, Barto County Library, Summer Hill, is $10,000, and Barto Recovery for $10,000. And I'll just point out that Barto Recovery, $10,000, is part of the opioid settlement funds that we received, a little over $62,000 last fall, as Keith talked about, Publix will be getting some additional funds there, but these are the contract performing services that were included in the budget, and I recommend those for your approval.
Did you, that was all of them?
Yes.
Yeah, Mayor, I just noticed flipping through the agenda, that the one for the library says Barto County Library, comma, Inc., and although they're, they have a watermark stamped that says Barto County Public Library, comma, Inc.
There's two different organizations.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was correct.
Yes, the $10,000 is to a separate entity than the other.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you for catching that.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. All right. Is there any discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Keith, you've got the next one, item 14 on the agenda.
Oh, Mayor, this is standard deed of dedication for sewer facilities for the Crown Inn, and is recommended by staff for approval.
Okay, questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Forsyth, you're up.
Yes, sir, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. This item is, it's actually two projects that we combined into one, is the Atco Pettit Creek and what we call the Jimmy Don Crane Sewer Project. It eliminates creek crossings of Pettit Creek. One on the left is the Atco Pettit Creek right near Castle Road, you can see it's starting to, or it has been having some support issues there. And then the one on the right, that's on Mr. Crane's property. We intend to eliminate both of those crossings and go underground with all the sewer in those areas. We bid both projects together, since they're similar in size, to minimize cost for this project, minimize mobilization, demobilization costs. We opened bids in May, the low bidder was utility water, utility and water services for $990,245. These are budgeted items, recommend for your approval.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Sydney on this item? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Mr. Hampton, and I'll note the meters on this item, it was listed somewhere as Saddlefield Town Homes, this is for Satterfield Town Homes.
That's correct, thank you, Mayor and Council. On behalf of electric department, I'm here requesting authorization to purchase 112 Form 12 meters by, from Equipment Controls Company, they are the provider of all the meters in conjunction with the current AMI system that we're working on now. The total price for 112 meters is $18,887.60, this is a budget expense and recommend your approval.
Thank you. Questions for Derek? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts.
We got you wearing purple now, that's awesome.
Good afternoon. I'm looking for approval for the additional sod at the Cartersville Soccer Complex. Southern Soccer Academy, they contracted with Kent Quinn Turf Management LLC, and they purchased 36,000 square foot, but it was not, in my opinion, enough to cover all of our bare spots, and so we're looking, we look for another 18,000 square foot at 85 cents for installation and prep, and that would be a total of $15,300. It is not a budgeted item, but we did have it in our operating, so, and I do recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Steve on this item? If, go ahead.
So I appreciate you taking the time, obviously, this, Steve started, he hit the ground running for the sport, he was here, he worked with the soccer association, we've been keeping those extra games off the fields and kind of moving them to Sam Smith Park, which has kind of helped, but obviously, the fields are in better, going in better shape when season starts than they were last fall, so this is recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Mr. Greer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is for the purchase of a 40,000-foot reel of 60-count fiber optic cable. This is going to be for stock and for extending our fiber infrastructure up at Great Valley Parkway. Total amount is $31,273 from Wholesale Electric Supply. This is a budgeted item, and we will use 2020 splotts funds for this, and we recommend this for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. While Mr. Wilson's making his way up, we do have cause to add three items to the agenda, chair will entertain a motion to do that.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Three items added. Go ahead, Wade.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. First item we have is the Solid Waste is requesting purchase of 624 residential garbage carts from Toder Carts, an amount of $37,659. This is a budget item, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Wade.
Aye, thank you. Solid Waste is also requesting the purchase of 16 eight-yard slant front dumpsters in the amount of $16,390 from Lewis Steelworks. This is a budget item, we also recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Thanks, sir. Mr. Dixon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As part of the relocation of City Natural Gas Facilities for GDOT's road project on Old Alabama Road, this project requires the tapping and stopping of two six-inch line stoppers. We requested a quotation from a local contractor who performs this operation as a sole source provider to the city gas system for this work. Southeastern Natural Gas Services of Rome provided a quote of $9,000 to perform the tapping and stopping operation. This is a budget item, council's approval, this quote's recommended.
We get, is that reimbursable?
Unfortunately, not.
Okay. Very good. Sorry, should've asked that in work session. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, sir. Gas system requested a quote for 200 Sonic's IQ 250 gas meters for stock. Equipment Controls Company of Norcross, Georgia is a sole source provider, and they provided a quote of $64,258. This is a budget purchase and council's approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I'll figure out who Julia gave the second to in those minutes next month. It was a tie? Let you play Alex Trebek over there a little bit. Travelers Insurance fiduciary coverage.
Yes, Mayor, this is a renewal of fiduciary coverage from Travelers Insurance at an amount of $11,592, recommend for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Irwin Street Building Study.
Yes, sir, this is the old fire station next door that we talked about in visioning session, to kind of make plans to move forward with that. This is kind of the first step in that. We had met with Jim Croft at Croft and Associates to take a look at that inside of the facility. Chief Carter and I walked through the building, basically, we, this proposal he has at $56,500 will kind of give us architectural engineering services, to kind of give us the first glance possible, possibility for that building there. It's not a full-fledged architectural plan until we decide, council decides what they want to do with the building. I do recommend approval of this agreement with Croft for $56,500.
Okay, any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Morgan, you've got the next three, please, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Wanted to come before you with the first quarter 2023 multiple radio invoice. It is our agreement with Barto County, primarily for police and fire, but is in the amount of $37,150.83, and we're asking for approval to pay that, please.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Yes, sir, this is a request to take departmental surplus assets and vehicles and place those on gov deals with your permission.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
The third item is a pension plan resolution and amendments. It is primarily with our 2017 plan, so this is a request to amend the 2017 plan to clarify retirement qualifications, modify the commencement of participation, increase the normal retirement multiplier, remove the bonus payment and domestic qualified order provisions, and we're modifying vesting requirements and provisions and the abilities to terminate the plan. We are asking for permission, because this is one of the requirements from GMFs as they're trying to move forward with their master plan.
Okay, and this all went through the Pension Board?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, it was approved by the Pension Board.
I figured as much, I just want to say, you hang right there. Any other discussion?
As we're moving forward, as Ray mentioned, we're moving forward with the September changeover at GMFs, where Keith and I are kind of reviewing the initial phase of the 2017 plan document agreement, and then as we made change to the 1967 plan, we'll do that, but those will be forthcoming in an ordinance in the next month or so. This is kind of the first step to try and get our plans closely aligned with theirs and make it as seamless as possible.
Okay, very good. Any chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion, motion carries unanimously. Before you walk off, while you're up here, last Saturday, Black Excellence Awards, and I just wanted to publicly recognize you for being awarded by that organization for the Breaking Barriers Award, so congratulations to you, and congratulations to our Mayor Pro Tem Calvin Cooley for the leadership, was that Leadership Award?
Yes.
Well, we all know that, but thank you, that was a fun night, and I just wanted to recognize you all both again for those accomplishments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Now to the added items in the agenda, Mr. Lovell, you have an encroachment agreement.
Yes, the first is an encroachment agreement with Georgia Power for easements that we need for the Main Street pump station. It is recommended by staff for approval. We don't have the final document from Georgia Power yet, so I would request your approval, subject to final approval by Mr. Forsyth and myself, and then that the mayor and city clerk is authorized to sign after that.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porter, you've got the next two in the finance report.
Yes, sir, the first item is an engagement with Raymond James, a standard agreement we have to do under the new Securities Exchange Commission requirements that came into effect back in 2008 or so. We're looking to get some numbers for potential bond issue on our water and sewer project, so this is just a requirement, it's not basically any compensation, just we have to have this in place, so do recommend this agreement, as it can be signed by the mayor and city clerk.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Cape saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. And the final votable item, go ahead.
Yes, sir, this is the annual renewal of our property casual insurance and workers compensation coverage. Met with Terry Watkins earlier this week, kind of looking over the coverages. Couple months ago, Liberty Mutual, who carries, covers the property casually, or our buildings, came through and reassessed, obviously increased the values, which makes it a little more expensive. We did have some other increases across the board, it's about a 12% increase in our premium. Total premium for all city properties, the workers' compensation and cyber liability, as well as law enforcement and public officials, is 1.1,267,577. And I also ask, as along with this agreement to, for the insurance for property casual and workers' compensation, is USIS who handles our third-party administration for workers' compensation. They process claims, because we are self-insured. I do recommend approval of all those items as part of this.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Cape saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porter, you will be giving us the finance report tonight.
I'll be as brief as possible, Mr. Mayor, this is through.
That's appreciated, as always.
Month of April, 10 months into our fiscal year, the numbers are very positive trending for our year-to-date numbers. There's, General Fund did have a slight loss for the month, actual month of April last year compared to the month of April prior year, as well as the water and electric systems, but as you look at the year-to-date numbers, they're trending very well. Couple things that Tom likes to point out is the local option sales tax. The number actually is already 110% of our proposed budget, so 10 months into the year, we've already exceeded what our anticipated sales tax. Part of that has to do with the renegotiation we had in January, that it went back in January for the negotiation of the loss, our split, is also as well as the increase in the lost money that we've had countywide.
Well, the inflation kind of shadows some of that as well, but it certainly does increase the number.
It has, and then the water and gas that we continue to, I'm sorry, the gas and electric, continue to watch those, obviously, we pay for, cost for the electric service that are coming from MEAG, and our gas costs, we're trying to keep those in line, but all funds are doing fairly well through 10 months of fiscal year. If I have, if anyone has any particular questions regarding the report.
Just typically wrap up with funded and unfunded, or excuse me, restricted and unrestricted, excuse me.
Restricted cash, yes, so the unrestricted cash decreased slightly at 345,000 due to decreases in the general water, general fund, water fund, the grant fund, solid waste, but overall, it's still doing very well for the unrestricted and restricted cash balance actually increased by 1.25 million as decrease, due to increases in the DEA, the hotel motel debt service in the 2020 SPOLOST, as well as pension funds.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the financial point? Any other business that needs come for counsel? Whoever wants to, step forward, and if you would, please, for our clerk, your name and your address.
Thank you, Mayor, Mike Lusk. I live at 4 Twin Leaf Court in Cartersville. I just had a quick question, Mayor. For, I just heard we're doing really well with our budget, and I know we've set the 23 budget, so we, we do know what the, what it's based on relative to the digest, right? So we have our digest. Do we have an idea what the millage is going to look like yet?
As part of the budget, we're keeping the millage the same, and we are not rolling back.
So no rollback?
Correct.
About a 40% increase, 38?
Uh...
In total dollars?
Well, and our proposed budget, basically, millage rate number is about, property assessments, I think, are about 22%, is what the county did, and of course, we only have preliminary digists. That number's going to change between now and, we'll get it finalized in August time period, but currently it's...
We're still going to be around 2.9?
2.91, or I think it's what, 2.91 is what we're currently...
That's where it was, yeah.
And that'll stay at that number. The recreation bond number will decrease some, so that will go down. We haven't seen those numbers yet. Of course, we always get preliminary digists, and we don't get the final one until late July typically.
You see any change in that? I'm asking because the flash would put us 2.09, some, you know, I'm wondering what's driving the idea of maintaining it as high as it is now.
The 2.91 to maintain it as high as it is?
Yeah.
I'd encourage you to look at other communities and see what theirs is.
Got that.
I'd also, again, relative to not rolling back, that means of that money, we'll do exactly what we did in years past. If the pie's getting bigger, the need for services and the need for people to do these services grows.
Yep.
We grow along with it. I'll take the opportunity to say that the state of Georgia grows exponentially in billions, and you hear that coming out of Atlanta. If we take in one more penny than we did the previous year, we've got to call it a tax increase.
And it is.
I don't have to. But what we have done historically, and what we'll do again this year, is by not rolling back, I think it's $825,000, we're using $425,000 of that to fund the plans and engineering for our fire station that'll be going up in Carter Grove. The other $400,000 is going to be used for additional paving in the area.
Thanks for that, because I have a follow-up to that, that particular expenditure. Is there a way we can put a SPOLOST in? Is there a way we can ask, vote on a SPOLOST to kind of cover some of these half-million-dollar jobs?
We do have, we do have SPOLOST, and then inside those, we include transportation projects, which includes paving and other various projects. Typically, we word it such that it can be used for that, right?
Yes, it is.
That's in addition to the L-MIG funding and to the, you know, the other funding that we've set aside.
So even with a SPOLOST, we're still having to absorb quite a bit straight out of the general fund?
Yeah, we, you know, you have to remember, the SPOLOST isn't just used for paving a road, it's also used for special projects, and the way the SPOLOST works is the county gets to designate special projects, like whatever they want to, like, for instance, landfill, a new jail, radio system, and those projects come off the 100% of the SPOLOST. So instead of getting the city's 21% of the SPOLOST on 100% of the value, we're getting our 21% on, and I don't know the exact percentages, but, you know, on 80% of the value. So, you know, because of that, there's not as much SPOLOST money out there for the city to use for things as there is for counties to use. That's just how the law in Georgia works. And so, you know, the city makes up that through by having to charge extra millage to pay for those services.
Yep.
That counties can pay for with SPOLOST, but just because of the way the math works, cities can't.
Understood that point. Thank you, thanks, Keith. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And again, for our clerk in the minutes, your name and your address.
My name? David Holt, 218 West Avenue. First of all, Dan, thank you for getting back to me on the quiet zone and do some research there. I think we were able to kind of get to the truth on that, and I appreciate you all digging in with that. But I'd like this committee to consider, because we've been blessed with our own municipalities, and we have a lot of money, and we don't, we're not struggling to do what we need to do as a city, but I would really like y'all to look at investing, whatever the cost may be, 300, 400, 500,000 dollars, in hiring an outside consulting firm to bring in to see what Cartersville will look like in the next five years, 10 years, 20 years, or should, you know, and you and I've had this conversation in my office, that we, we don't have, we don't have a plan, a real, how do we become a Acworth if we want to be one, or how do we become a Canton, or whatever, if we want to be that? But instead of, I feel like we have a lot of money, we spend a lot of money, we take care of our town, but it, where are we going? What's our plan? And, and I'm, like, I've been in the business world all my life. I've never seen a successful company without a really plan to chase the goal and go after, and I don't feel like we have one. I feel like we have a lot of money. Our founding fathers gave us municipalities, and we're blessed to be able to have all that money, and we're blessed to be able to dole it out like we do. I'm sure the taxpayers would like to see more of it come back in parks and dog parks and fun things like that, but I don't think we can do that if we don't have a plan on how we're going to get from here to there. And we know what here is, but we don't know what there is. So I think we should use people outside of this county, outside of this city, and people that do it for a living, and hire a firm to come in here, let us spend some of our money and say, hey, we got a lot of growth coming to us. How are we going to handle all these apartments? How are we going to handle this education? How are we going, where's the housing for all these 6,000 people that are going to come work here? Do we, do we need them? Do we want them? I mean, where is a long-range plan for that? And I know we checked the box, we have the plan we have to submit to the state, but I'm talking about a really dug-in detailed plan with a lot of input from a lot of people in the city, not just the council. So I'm asking that y'all consider that. I have no way of anything other than asking you, because I think it's really a remiss for us not to have that. I can't believe that we really don't, we have zoning maps, we have this map, but we don't know where we're going as a, as a town. And it can't just reside with this council, it's got to reside with the city. So I'm asking you that, I'm putting it out there, I don't know how you get it from here to there, but that's all I got to say, and thank you again for your help with the quiet zone. I look forward to that happening pretty quick.
Any other business that needs come for counsel? Chair will entertain a motion.
I'm moved.
adjourned?
There you go.